Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is October 25th, Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, and it's 7:02 PM. We declare for the rules.
Councilman Rafai?
Present.
Councilwoman Chakovsky?
Present.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Present.
Councilman Al Brehmaqi is not present. Councilman El Samiri?
Yeah, present.
Councilwoman Hassan?
Present.
Mr. Mayor? Present. We have a call, Mr. Mayor.
All right. The vice president. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have any community announcements? Mr. Church?
Yes.
Do we have the Chowdhury?
Yes. Just three of them. First one is the tomorrow, I think, is the Trunket Street. So everyone is invited to join tomorrow, 5 to 7. Thank you. The other ones are, there is a rally, it's called Protect Democracy Rally, tomorrow, in Warren City at UAW Region 1 Building. So our Lieutenant Governor Gil Frist will be there, Secretary of State Justin Benson will be there, and many other dignitaries will be there. That's tomorrow, and it's hosted by APIA, Asian Pacific Island Order. And the other one, it is from MIBADC, Michigan DMS, Michigan Bangladeshi American Democratic Caucus. There's a rally, they're hosting on Sunday, October 30th, 6:30 to 9:30. Many, many elected officials will be there, as well as all the community leaders. So it is going to be at Aoud Shaheeb Palace and Restaurant, 4235 12 Mile Road, Warren, Michigan. That is on October 30th, I repeat, Sunday, 6:30 to 9:30, and everyone, according to the invite, to join. Thank you.
Any more announcements? All right, we'll move to the Proclamations, Recognizations, and Presentations. And we will start with the proclamation recognizing the life and memory of Twila Meyer. And I would have Councilwoman Landa, please, to read it, please.
Proclamation recognizing the life and memory of Twila Meyer. Twila Frances Meyer was a unique, beautiful, and caring person that spent a large part of her life living in and loving the city of Hamtramck. And whereas Twila's love of acting showcased itself in multiple performances from high school into adulthood, and even some stints as a stand-up comedian, and she remained an ardent supporter of film, music, and other forms of art, encouraging people to share their messages through creative means. And whereas Twila worked with her life partner, Bill Meyer, of 56 years, to leave both intangible and tangible legacies, the Yemen mural Bengla mural project and the COVID mural project, to name a few, throughout, through their facilitation of one Hamtramck. And whereas Twila continuously cared for her beautiful garden and ensured a rest stop was always present on the front lawn for anyone who was walking down the street and might feel called to sit down for a while. And whereas Twila demonstrated a soft spot for animals, especially her beloved dog, Tanya, vociferously supported TNVR efforts in the city. And whereas Twila was quick with compassion, which also made her quick to march for many causes in search of strength, unity, and the end to discrimination of any type, both domestic and abroad. And whereas Twila and her memory have impacted an untold number of individuals, and created memories abound in the arts, recipes from her kitchen, weddings, and down-to-smiling interactions when walking into a local coffee shop. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Amar Galib, along with the entire Hamtramck City Council, express our sincerest condolences to the family, friends, and comrades of Twila Meyer. And the day of her memorial service, Sunday, December 11th, 2022, shall be known as Twila Frances Meyer Promoter of Peace Memorial Day.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And we have the official proclamation here, and since Bill Meyer is here, I would like to present it to him.
Can you sign up for this?
All right. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you, Doc, everyone. Yeah, I'm not gonna see our coffee shop.
I'm speechless. I'm sorry.
You don't need to say anything, though. We're all here for you.
I didn't expect this. I was gonna try to be cool when I got here. Thank you, so. I love you all.
All right. The next proclamation is the Halloween proclamation. I would have the clerk read it, please.
The Halloween proclamation, I apologize. City of Hamtramck Halloween 2022 proclamation. Whereas the city of Hamtramck annually observes the tradition of trick-or-treating at Halloween time, and whereas the city of Hamtramck seeks to provide a safe environment for children to participate in trick-or-treating, and whereas the city of Hamtramck can better provide a safer environment for trick-or-treating by establishing a date and time for the activity. First, the city of Hamtramck has determined that it is advisable to temporarily amend the curfew ordinance for Sunday, October 30th, to be from 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM on Monday, October 31st, for Monday, October 31st, 2022, for Halloween, trick-or-treating to be between the hours of 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM, with a responsible parent or guardian. And second, the city of Hamtramck asks that all participants be careful when crossing streets, and that wherever possible participants may, whenever possible, participants be accompanied by an adult or guardian. And third, the city of Hamtramck asks that all vehicle drivers use extra caution during the trick-or-treating hours to assist in protecting the lives of trick-or-treaters participating. Given under my hand and seal in Hamtramck, Michigan, on this 25th day of October, 2022, signed, Amar Galib, Mayor of City of Hamtramck.
Thank you. Do you want me to take the next one, Mayor?
You can take the last one. I'll take this one. So the next proclamation is Cosmos District Champions. So the City of Hamtramck proclamation recognizing Hamtramck Cosmos Championship Season. Whereas the Hamtramck Cosmos Athletic Team represents Hamtramck Public Schools and the entire Hamtramck community with pride and dedication. And whereas participation in high school athletic, athletics encourages students to learn not only through the techniques of the sport, but other skills that will benefit them throughout their lives, including leadership, collaboration, and adaptability. And whereas the hard-worked education, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional teamwork of the 2022 Hamtramck High School Boys Soccer Team has enabled these student athletes to earn season record of eight, one, one, and championship district title. And whereas head coach Dennis Foster and the entire coaching staff, athletic director Antonio Johnson, team member, parents, faculty, and students, student body at Hamtramck High School were integral in guiding the team to victory throughout their unwavering support. And whereas it is important that people throughout our community to know and understand the importance of high school athletics and the dedication that goes into each and every practice, competition, and victory. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Amar Galib and the Hamtramck City Council do hereby recognize and heartily congratulate Hamtramck High School and the 2022 District Championship Soccer Team on its outstanding accomplishments this year.
City of Hamtramck proclamation recognizing November as Family Court Awareness Month. Whereas the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee, FCAMC, is to increase awareness on the importance of family court system and prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. And whereas the mission of the FCAMC is fueled by the desire to create awareness and change in the family court system for the conservatively estimated 58,000 children a year ordered into unsupervised contact with physically or sexually abusive parents, while honoring the hundreds of children who have been reported as murdered during visitation with a dangerous parent. And whereas the mission of the FCAMC is to increase awareness on the importance of empirically based education and training on domestic violence, child emotional and psychological abuse, childhood trauma, child sexual abuse, coercive control, post-separation abuse for all professionals working on cases within the family court system. And whereas the mission of the FCAMC is to increase awareness of the importance of using scientifically valid evidence-based treatment programs and services that are proven to, proven in terms of safety, effectiveness, and therapeutic value. And whereas the mission of the FCAMC is to educate judge and other family court professionals on evidence-based peer-reviewed research, such research is a critical component to making decisions and are truly in the best interest of children. This research includes the adverse childhood experience, ACEs, study, co-principal investigator, Vincent Kalidi, Kaiser Permanente CDC, child custody evaluators, beliefs about domestic abuse allegations, principal investigator, Daniel Saunders, University of Michigan, sponsored by the National Institute of Justice, and child custody outcomes in cases involving parental alienation and abuse allegations, principal investigator, Joanne S. Meyer, GW Law School, sponsored by the National Institute of Justice. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Glebe, Mayor of Hamtramck, hereby declare the month of November to be Family Court Awareness Month. I encourage all residents to support the local community's efforts to prevent the harm of children in the hands of family members and to honor and value the lives of children. Thank you. All right, we'll move to the additions, additions, agenda of COVID. Do we have any additions or additions? All right. Okay, we'll move then to the public.
Thank you. I have Sala Hadwan. Three minutes, sir.
All right. Good evening. I'm here to talk as a parent, not on behalf of the Board of Education or anything. The speed bumps that have been installed in the city need to be reevaluated, you know, and they're just not doing the job that is intended. You know, we want to rectify this, and you know, I'm sure that the Board will be willing to work with you guys, with the city, to make a resolve and see what our other options are, and go from there. You know, we just, a lot of people in the community are not happy with these. All right. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. Mr. George Hilaris? If you'd like to introduce yourself.
Yes. Hello, everyone. I'm a teacher at Hamtramck High School, and I know that you received a letter that I wrote for the last council meeting. I had a medical emergency in my room of a student. Twenty-five minutes EMS services took to get there. It was traumatizing to me and my students. You know, when I did the investigation, found out that Hamtramck has one ambulance on 24-hour standby, and then one ambulance from 12 to 8, and that's it. So what ended up happening was the one ambulance was taking someone else on a run, and my student was, had to wait 25 minutes until his parents were able to take him in. Me, as an educator, you know, I don't need to rehash the letter that I already read to you, but it was upsetting to find that out. And I wanted to make you all aware of that. Even though I'm not a voting member of Hamtramck, I have had a huge influence on the community. I love the community, I love the students, I love the city, love everything about it, and it just was upsetting to know that that could happen to some of my students' parents, it could happen to me if I had a medical emergency, one of you. So what I want to say is I have over 90 signatures from the school of students that read the letter and support action by you all. I know that you want to do the right thing. The fire chief has reached out to me already and said that you've already taken some short-term steps to try to maybe adjust that time window, and you're working at getting EMS services back in the fire department. I think that's wonderful news, that's encouraging. But I do want to let you know that we've packed this board meeting with people, and they will be voting, and they are looking for action from you. One of the council members isn't here today. He won the last election by less than 50 votes. There's well over 50 people in this room. There's 90 signatures. They all talk. So they're gonna be looking for action, not trying to push it down the road, kick the bucket down the road. And we know that you'll do the right thing and get on that as soon as possible. You have the power and ability to change that, and we're here asking you to do everything you can to change that. So respectfully, I'm here on behalf of my community and my students, who I love and I'm passionate about, and I don't want to see anything bad happen to them. I don't want to see that happen again. So that's my motivation here. Some of the students would like to speak as well, and I told them the importance of democracy and how to get change in your community is through being involved in your community can make a difference. So that's why they're here tonight. So I hope that if you'd like a copy of these signatures, I could give them.
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So the next few speakers are going to be students from the school as well, okay? Sammy Salmon, is that how it's pronounced?
Yeah, it's Sammy Salmon.
Welcome to, three minutes.
So I wanted to speak as a student at Hamtramck High School about the same incident where a student passed out, and the most shocking news was even after half an hour, no ambulance arrived. So by that time, the parents had to rush in and take the student to the hospital, which is unacceptable. Since Hamtramck has eight schools containing thousands of students and about 28,000 people, one full-time ambulance is just not enough for that, if something were to happen at a larger scale or at multiple places at the same time. We all know that Hamtramck is not a perfect city, and it's impossible for, it's not impossible for something like that to happen here. We are the future of our nation, and we need to ensure that no young lives are lost just for the lack of a vehicle. Ambulance services are the primary providers of 27, 24/7 responses to medical and trauma-related emergency. We understand and appreciate that there are solutions being offered. However, we would like to hope for a long-term solution and not a short-term solution so the same situation doesn't repeat again. Also, I have a few signatures too.
No, thank you. I'll take those. Tessine Chowdhury?
Good evening, everyone. I'm just gonna keep it brief since we're all talking about the same topic, but we're all aware of the diversity of the city, but with these amazing people coming from all around the world, we still have some challenges that we have to face, one of them being the lack of transportation. Personally speaking, I had to use the ambulance about three times over the past seven years, and every single time it took at least 30 minutes for that ambulance to come and arrive at our house. So a lot of the Hamtramck residents do not have the privilege to own this transportation. And as more and more incoming immigrants come into the city, it is the city's job to make sure that our residents are being taken care of and provided the bare minimum services that they deserve. What happened to that student could have been happening to anybody, my family, your family, your loved ones. So it is our, the city's, we're the responsibility that we get taken care of. And yeah, I just think that the city should step up and help us. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Shanjidi? Shanjida?
Yes. I was here last year with Mrs. Madison's class. We were talking about the problems in our city, and one of them was reckless driving. And so like this contributes to that. So the residents of Hamtramck are important to us, and they're beloved us. It's a big hazard to have only one ambulance for the whole city, not just the school district, but the whole city. The population is 28,000, which is continuing to grow, and honestly, it's a big hazard to have only one, I'm sorry, and it's continuing to grow now, so it can get dangerous here without immediate aid for emergency. Only one accident doesn't happen at a time, so it's a big life hazard. Someone could literally lose their life because of this. It's a big, and happy to one person, it can happen to everyone, so please take it into consideration and just more incidences.
Thank you. Habiba Chowdhury?
Good evening, everyone. Oftentimes, paramedics are skilled in first aid and/or CPR, and that may be an necessary thing for anyone in an emergency. Having access to ambulances develops a sense of safety and security in our community. Our people are deserving of assistance. It is disappointing to see that emergencies are not seen as important. Safety of our residents should be the city's top priority, so why should we not get more full-time ambulances? This is an issue that needs to be heard right now, and if not, then it would be putting so many of our citizens' lives in danger.
Thank you. Is it Mist Begum?
Amisti.
Amisti, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. People could be in life-threatening situations, and not having access to an ambulance immediately can make their conditions worse. As you know, there was an incident regarding a child who passed out during Hamtramck High School, and there was no ambulance for her. We should use this as a sign to have more ambulances in Hamtramck and to better our city. No person should have to worry about their health becoming worse because they don't have access to medical care. We should be able to feel safe and be able to rely on emergency services. What does this say for our future? Why should we continue to let this problem happen when we can resolve this by prioritizing people's health? There are many people living in Hamtramck, and their health should always come first.
Thank you. Kefal Islam?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to ask, can everyone ask yourself how it can be justifiable that a city of 20, 28,000 people has only a full-time ambulance? If a group of people have a medical emergency at the same time, while the ambulance can provide transportation to only one, who that one will be? Will it be Mr. Mayor, or will it be one of the members sitting here right now? That day, we went through that exact situation where the student who needed help but couldn't get the help. Thank God it wasn't a life-threatening situation, otherwise, who knows what would happen? We are Buddhists of tomorrow, and we want you guys to take actions. Mr. Mayor, you are a help worker, and I'm pretty sure you understand how important it is to provide medical support during an emergency. We can't wait to take actions unless something terrible takes place. And that's why, Taifu Islam, member of this community, asking you to take immediate actions. Thank you, everyone.
I actually have the parent of the student who this incident happened to, Mr. Akram Musa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Councilmember. Okay, this is what happened before I started anything. Can you please stand up? I'm gonna show you something, what I'm gonna, you know, mention. This is a monitor for heart track. Dr. Mayor, I think you, you know what. Okay, what happened? We're gonna make it short. You know, I have a history of a heart attack. My parent, he had a heart attack, and March 16th of 2021, I have a heart attack myself. My son, he could have had it. What happened in the city, it's, it's, it's not appreciated, because that's not a service for a city, for a city that, that, you know, we've been, we've been living almost our life. Never happened like that before. But what happened? I even have a video, speaking with one of the ambulances that was hidden in that street, and I talked to him. He said, "I'm just a contractor. You gotta speak with a dispatch." So I, I don't know why the city cannot have like more contractors or some ambulance, at least, if we cannot get our own ambulance. I mean, with me, I have a car, I speak English, I can take my son, I have time. Other parents, they don't have it. This is not, could be a heart attack, could be athletic, you know, injury, it could be something in the, in the school, not even in the school, in the public, you know, all over, in the community. This is, you have to take an action for this, and I appreciate if we see more improvement. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have Bill Meyer.
Are we done with that?
Yes, we're all set with that.
I'll just change something.
No? No? Okay, Mr. Bill Meyer.
First of all, I'm thrilled that young people have come to the council meeting. You don't see this very often, I can tell you. And it's very important that you keep coming, not just because this one incident just happened, but there's many issues in the city. It would be wonderful if you're coming to be part of solving our problems. My name's Bill Meyer. I'm a citizen of the world. I live on Trow Bridge in the city of Hamtramck, the only Muslim-majority city in the entire Western Hemisphere. I've been saying that for many years. People eventually realize what I'm saying. I came, I haven't been here in a while, and I came to explain why I haven't been here. You obviously know, I was totally taken aback by your proclamation. I didn't know that was happening. It took all I had to come here to see you, because I spent many weeks here, years in this room. So what happened on August 22nd, my wife was very sick, Twila, and I called the ambulance, and thank you for the two ambulance drivers who did appear at our house on time and got her to the emergency room. Very grateful for that. She was found to be tested positive for COVID, although she already had COVID two or three times this year, so we didn't think that was the reason. She went into a coma the second day with delirium and, and speech impediment, it seemed double, and she went out, and we never talked to her again. That was August 23rd. She never came out of coma. Ten days later, there was a test taken that she had West Nile virus, and that's what was attacking her brain. She has RA, rheumatoid arthritis, which is a severe debilitating disease which prevents you from fighting diseases in your body. It's, autoimmune system is, is affected. She couldn't fight it. Plus, she's an older person, 76. Those four factors affected her result. She was in a coma for two months, and I didn't say anything to people around here, I didn't do anything on social media, because I kept hoping that I'd have a good message to send out to you, but it never came. She passed away Saturday. And like you know from reading proclamation, 56 years with the person I love most of my life, it's very hard to live with, it's very hard to deal with. So I'll explain. I don't say citizen of the world because it's a joke or nothing like that. Both Twila and I are inseparable. We think alike on almost everything. We've been activists all our life, fighting for peace and justice. And the World Service Organization offers membership to be a world citizen, and we became world citizens. And here's, I note this with me to show you, this is my certificate, Twila's certificate. And everyone can be a world citizen. Check it out at worldservice.org, you can all be a world citizen. If you believe in this recognition that our rights and duties extend humanity into the earth as our planetary home, we know that the world we share unites all of us. We take an active role in our community, and we work with others to make our planet more peaceful, sustainable, fair, and just. I think most people believe that way. There's no barriers, there's no boundaries between people. We're all human beings. So Twila felt that way, and despite the fact that I speak more than her, and I come here, and sometimes I'm more outspoken than her, she believed a lot of same things I did. And we've had our ups and downs over the years in Hamtramck, but it's such a vital city, such a vibrant, exciting city of experiences for the last 22 years we've lived here. And I've been there almost, if a council meeting could be here, and Twila was with me as much as often as possible. If she could say, if she could see what happened today, obviously, she's a humble person who we've never wanted awards, never wanted the recognition. I'm the one who's outspoken, I come up, and she feels the same way. She was just concerned with helping people, bringing people together, that's
It's a big hazard to have only one ambulance for the whole city, not just the school district, but the whole city. Um, the population is twenty eight thousand, which is continuing to grow. And honestly, it's a big hazard to have only one. I'm sorry. Uh, and it's continuing to run out. So it can get dangerous here without immediate aid for emergency. Only one accident doesn't happen at a time, so it's a big life hazard. Someone could literally lose their life because of this. Big and happy to one person, it can happen to everyone. So please take it into consideration and just more.
Thank you. Habiba Chowdhury?
Good evening, everyone. Oftentimes paramedics are skilled in first aid and/or CPR, and that may be an necessary thing for anyone in an emergency. Having access to ambulances develops a sense of safety and security in our community. Our people are deserving of assistance. It is disappointing to see that emergencies are not seen as important. Safety of our residents should be the city's top priority. So why should we not get more full-time ambulances? This is an issue that needs to be heard right now, and if not, then it would be putting so many of our citizens' lives in danger.
Thank you. Is it Mist Vigan? Amesti? Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. People could be in life-threatening situations, and not having access to ambulance immediately can make their conditions worse. As you know, there was an incident regarding a child who passed out during Pantramic High School, and there was no ambulance for her. We should use this as a sign to have more ambulances in Pantramic and to better our city. No person should have to worry about their health becoming worse because they don't have access to medical care. We should be able to feel safe and be able to rely on emergency services. What does this say for our future? Why should we continue to let this problem happen when we can resolve this by prioritizing people's health? There are many people living in Pantramic, and their health should always come first.
Thank you. Kehful Islam?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I just want to ask, can everyone ask yourself how it can be justifiable that a city of twenty, twenty-eight thousand people has only a full-term ambulance? If a group of people have a medical emergency at the same time, while the ambulance can provide transportation to only one, who, who that one will be? Will it be Mr. Mayor? Or will it be one of the members sitting here right now? That day, we went through that exact situation where the student who needed help but couldn't get the help. Thank God, it wasn't a life-threatening situation. Otherwise, who knows what would happen? We are voters of tomorrow, and we want you guys to take actions. Mr. Mayor, you are a health worker, and I'm pretty sure you understand how important it is to provide medical support during an emergency. We can't wait to take actions unless something terrible takes place. And that's why, Kehfuslam, member of this community, asking you to take immediate action. Thank you, everyone.
I actually have the parent of the student who this incident happened to, Mr. Akram Musa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, councilmember. Okay, this is what happened. Before I start anything, can you please stand up? My son, he is showing you something what I'm gonna, you know, uh, uh, mention. This is a monitor for heart track, Dr. Mayor. I think you, you know what. Okay, what happened? We're gonna make it short. You know, I have a history of a heart attack. My parents have a heart attack. And March sixteen of two thousand twenty-one, I have a heart attack myself. My son, he could have had it. What happened in the city, it's, it's, it's not appreciated. Because that's not a service for a city, for, for, for a city that, that, you know, we've been, we've been living all, almost our life. Never happened like that before. But what happened? I even have a video speaking with one of the ambulance that was hidden in that street. And I talked to him, he said, I'm just a contractor. You gotta speak with a, a, a dispatch. So I, I don't know why the city cannot have, like, more contractors or some ambulance, at least, if we cannot get our own ambulance. I mean, with me, I have a car, I speak English, I can take my son, I have time. Other parents, they don't have it. This is not, could be a heart attack, could be athletic, you know, injury, it could be something in the, in, in the school. Not even in the school, in the public, you know, all over in the community. This is, you, you have to take an action for this, and I appreciate if we see more improvement. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have Bill Meyer.
Are we done with that?
Yes, we're all set with that. No? Okay, Mr. Bill Meyer.
First of all, um, I'm thrilled that young people have come to the council meeting. You don't see this very often, I can tell you. And it's very important that you keep coming, not just because this one incident took place, but there's many issues in the city. It would be wonderful if you're coming to be part of solving our problems. Our, uh, my name's Bill Meyer. I'm a citizen of the world. I live on Trow Bridge in the city of Pantramic, the only Muslim-majority city in the entire Western Hemisphere. I've been saying that for many years. People eventually realize what I'm saying. Uh, I came, I haven't been here in a while, and I came to explain why I haven't been here. You obviously know, I was totally taken aback by your proclamation. I didn't know that was happening. It took all I had to come here, to see you. Because I spent many weeks here, years in this room. So what happened on August twenty-second? My wife was very sick, Twila, and I called the ambulance. And thank you for the two ambulance drivers who did appear at our house on time and got her to the emergency room. Very grateful for that. She was found to be tested positive for COVID. Though she already had COVID two or three times this year, so we didn't think that was the reason. She went into a coma the second day with delirium and, and speech impediment, it seemed double. And she went out, and we never talked to her again. That was August twenty-third. She never came out of coma. Ten days later, there was a test taken that she had West Nile virus. And that's what was attacking her brain. She has RA, rheumatoid arthritis, which is a severe debilitating disease, which prevents you from fighting diseases in your body. It's, uh, autoimmune system is, is affected. She couldn't fight it. Plus, she's an older person, seventy-six. Those four factors affected her result. She was in a coma for two months, and I didn't say anything to people around here. I didn't do anything on social media because I kept hoping that I'd have a good message to send out to you. But it never came. She passed away Saturday. And, uh, like you know from reading proclamation, fifty-six years with the person I love most of my life, it's very hard to live with. It's very hard to deal with. So I'll explain. I don't say citizen of the world because it's a joke or nothing like that. Both Twila and I are inseparable. We think alike on almost everything. We've been activists all our life, fighting for peace and justice. And the World Service Organization offers membership to be a world citizen. And we became world citizens. And here's a notice with me to show you. This is my certificate, Twila's certificate. And everyone can be a world citizen. Check it out at worldservice.org. You can all be a world citizen. If you believe in this recognition that our rights and duties extend to humanity into the earth as our planetary home, we know that the world we share unites all of us. We take an active role in our community, and we work with others to make our planet more peaceful, sustainable, fair, and just. I think most people believe that way. There's no barriers, there's no boundaries between people. We're all human beings. So Twila felt that way. And despite the fact that I, I speak more than her, and I come here, and sometimes I'm more outspoken than her, she believed a lot of same things I did. And we've had our ups and downs over the years in Pantramic, but it's such a vital city, such a vibrant, exciting city of experiences for the last twenty-two years we've lived here. And I've been there almost, every council meeting I could be here, and Twila was with me as much as often as possible. If she could save, if she could see what happened today, she, obviously. She's a humble person who really never wanted awards, never wanted the recognition. I'm the one who's outspoken, I come up, and she feels the same way. She was, uh, just concerned with helping people, bringing people together. That's why we have one in Pantramic. That's, uh, the motto is helping bring the communities together. Because we know that we can never go forward if you can't work together, can't be together, and respect each other for what they, who they are, what they are. And as you know, I said, two months ago, my last meeting, on August ninth, I said, well, I haven't seen a council meeting like this in all the years we've lived here. This was so tame and so respectful to each other. No rudeness, just a determination to work together and solve the problems that we have, for sure. And so I made a statement that I said, I don't know why I have to come here anymore because you guys are working together, and I'm sure you're gonna solve the problems. So you probably thought I meant that, and that's why I wasn't here for two months. It was because of my wife. But I'll be around, and I hope we can make the city better. Thank you to all of you.
Mr. Mayor, there is a little public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your concern and your comments. Everything will be taken into consideration and we'll work and do our best to try to solve the current problems that we have. Thank you so much for coming. So we'll move to the consent agenda, and this is approved in a single motion with no discussion. Item A, approval of minutes from the October eleven, two thousand twenty-two regular city council meeting. B, approval of invoice registered date ending October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. C, approval of pre-approved extended share date ending October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No objections?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize if I can... What is that term that you use?
Suspend.
Suspend, yes. I forgot a public comment that was emailed to me, and I'd like to read it, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Uh, so I received an email, as I was saying, from John Birchtoold. Dear Honorable City Clerk, please include it for good comma. I am the gentleman that Bill Meyer interviewed on his show regarding the city manager search. I have been following the city's progress. In addition to creating the ad for the search, please consider including a recruitment profile. Most serious candidates review this document to see if their skill set matches the city's desired, desires and needs. Likewise, the city council should use the document as a measure in deciding which candidate meets the city's desires and needs. This provides any objective measure in screening. I'm prepared to assist the city. John D. Birchtoold, life member, International City Management Association. Under separate cover, I will send you a recruitment profile that I supplied you guys with, a sample of his recruitment profile that I developed for another city. And that would, that was it. That is all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I guess I don't have to read the consent agenda again?
No.
So it is approved?
Yes.
We're gonna have a public hearings. We'll move to the new businesses, and we have resolution twenty, twenty-two dash one thirty-one, approving sale of eight-eight-zero-zero Lumpkin.
Motion? Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have Ms. Block there here with us today, who is arranging the sale of this and the next resolution.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I'm so happy to be here and present this sale, as well as the next one. The buyer for eight-eight-zero-zero Lumpkin has provided a complete application. The overview in the agenda item explains that this is an expansion of an existing home. The parcels will be combined, and the home will expand onto what is currently the city-owned parcel. Uh, this will assist in providing for the high demand for larger lots and larger homes in Pantramic. It will also increase the tax base. And finally, this parcel is often occupied with debris and trash, and will, and will remediate that issue as well. Uh, the applicant is Danya Hadwan, and applicant's brother is here as well. If you have any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The only question I have is, I'm just looking at the sketch, and it looks like a lot of pavement. It's on, it's with the, within the ordinance, with the driveway and then the sidewalk going around the rooms and everything.
You know, the final site plan would be reviewed against a fifty percent rule, which states that fifty percent of the uncovered lot must be landscaped. I did not do that calculation in advance. Just thank you.
No more discussion?
Councilman Al Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hassan? Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty-two, one thirty-one, approving sale of eighty-eight hundred Lumpkin, approved.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move to the next one. Resolution twenty-two, twenty-two dash one thirty-two, approving sale of one-one-five-six-two Nagel.
Motion? Second.
Okay, so this, um, is also a large lot. It's a sixty-by-one-hundred lot, similar to the, to what I shared earlier. There's a high demand for larger lots and larger homes. Um, there has been a complete application provided. Sketches, which you have seen. Um, the applicant and buyer is out of state. He was not able to be here today. And basically, that's it. You've seen many of these before. Let me know if you have any questions.
Bo?
Yeah.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty-two, one thirty-two, approving sale of one-one-five-six-two Nagel, approved.
Thank you. All right. So we will move to the reports, and we'll start with the, with my report. So first, I would like to, uh, thank everyone who attended today's meeting, especially the students and teachers. And we, we read the letter that you sent earlier. We discussed with each other. Uh, it is an important issue that was raised this time. Uh, I, I am a healthcare worker myself, and we never had that issue. We always called the ambulance to the clinic sometimes, and they arrived on time. But this is a serious incident that we should take into consideration. And so we'll discuss with each other and see what's the best, um, method to improve the healthcare services in our city. We are not ignoring your concerns. So we will take it into consideration and seriously. And we will seek the help of some specialists to open, uh, help us with what's the best way we can do. And if that's possible, and we can afford it as well, because we have limited resources in our city. So thanks again, and hopefully you will hear some good news in the near future. Uh, the, incident, the events that I attended over the past two weeks, I was, on the twenty-first, we attended the American Council for Human Rights in Durban. Uh, and I was there with Councilman Rafaie and Councilman Samiri. It was a big event, and, uh, we enjoyed being there. We met so many elected officials and, um, from different cities. And, uh, the second event was, uh, yesterday. We were honored by the visit of the YMNE ambassador in Washington. And he visited the city hall. We awarded him a certificate for appreciation for visiting our city. And we met with him, we discussed things that, uh, of common interest between the residents of Pantramic and the YMNE embassy in Washington. Um, also, I attended an event for the ASAL organization last week, with Councilman Chowdhury. Uh, it was in Warren. And they discussed some issues regarding elections and political affairs that has to do mainly with the Asian, South Asian, um, community in Pantramic and elsewhere. That's all. I also attended the celebration of some Bengali group, the birth of the Prophet Muhammad, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, that took place on the twenty-second on Mesquite. That's all for me, and we'll move to the report of the mayor for them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I cannot go a lot of event with mayor and council. It's part of my job, responsibility. But I did attend a few fundraising dinner for the state senate and state rep and couple of, one of the congressmen, and, uh, and actually two congressmen. So I'm working right now, whatever time I have, after my work for the election, going up here, a couple of cities myself, with the Stephenisian, with the Abraham Ayash, to tell the people to go vote, and it's very important. So young generation, tell, please, your parents to go and vote. So the proposal is very important. I'm support, uh, I'm supporting proposal one and two, but in my personally, I'm not supporting proposal three. So it's up to you guys how you guys are gonna do it, but to go and vote is very important. We need to go vote. That's all I've been doing. And still, I'm taking the November eighth day off to help the people to go, bring the vote and tell the people to go vote. I was in also the Islamic rally, our prophet, uh, Muhammad Mustafa Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. And thank you, city administration. It was very peaceful, and, and there is no issue. Police department did a very good job and, and, right. So this is the, like, diverse community and a religious freedom country. And it was proved that, and we have done. It's last time, Hindus people done, we done, and, and a lot of other peoples also do, and there's nothing wrong, everything peacefully happened. So thanks again, everybody.
Thank you. The mayor for them, and we will move to the city council report. Anyone would like to say something?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman?
Um, so Councilman Samiri Chowdhury and I went to the Michigan Municipal League Convention last week, and we went to a few different, um, some assortment of us went through some creativity training. We went through some teamwork stuff. Um, we learned about, um, mental health and joining that with police work for the best outcomes for the community and climate action plans and some other topics. And we ended up networking with a lot of other people from across the state. You know, trying to find people who have similar issues to us to figure out how other cities are tackling similar problems to what we have. And so I think that we all enjoyed our time there and made some good connections. And, um, the other thing is, is that I know that there was a mention of the city manager cert, so I just wanted to say that we, since we were at the conference last week, we did not have a chance to meet as a subcommittee, but that should be coming soon. So stay tuned for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilwoman? Thank you. Good evening to you all. First of all, I'd like to thank you to the teacher and the students for showing up here today. Uh, this is called unity and empowerment to the community and encouraging the council member and mayor to work together and the city administration. I really appreciate it, all of you, to being here tonight. And I will do everything in my ability and power to make sure that this is, get resolved and take an action to this extent where we can afford to have another ambulance, another EMS services. And I would encourage my, Mr. Mayor and colleagues to work together to resolve this because this could happen to any one of us, anytime. And as you heard from a young lady, it's a twenty-one, twenty-eight thousand populations, density city. We must seek for resolve, uh, a problem solutions to mitigate this kind of incident. And I'd like to also mention Mr. Myers, wife, Twila. They're a great couple. And great advocate, ambassador to this community. They have been emphasizing, doing a lot of community activities to this community and around the world. And my condolences, my prayer and thoughts to, to Bill Meyer's family. May Allah give them peace and make it easy on their family. And, uh, again, I have another one, yes. That is, uh, this is a program from Michigan government, governor. It's called Mi-HAF. You know, this program helps you to pay for your utilities, your mortgage, if you have a delictant mortgage, taxes. It's called Mi-HAF, and on michigan.gov/mi-h-a-f. Mi-HAF. This will help you to pay your utility bills and other bills that you're in delictant. So check it out. I mean, this pays up to twenty-five thousand dollars to homeowner. And it's a great benefit and tools to, um, look, uh, to, to search and apply. Okay, that's all. Thank you so much for listening. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Uh, let's take this appointment and thank the students and the teachers that showed up here today. Like my colleagues in there, my colleagues have spoken, it's something serious, and hopefully, within time, will come to us at the council meeting and come to, you know, to provide a better solution regarding the ambulance. To all my citizens, as you know, I'll be traveling October thirty-first to my colleagues, and this regarding Family Matters. And, uh, you know, all the citizens, colleagues could still communicate with me through my emails. So even though I'm gonna be out of the country, my, my email is still available for any citizens or anybody that has any concerns, questions, you know, city issues. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I forget to mention one more thing, if possible.
Okay.
So, uh, Michigan Municipal League Convention is very important. Uh, my eleven years, I've been, uh, a lot of times I live there. Some of them, I already crossed the level three. I already have the level one certificate. And two, level two is coming. So this, this convention and education from Michigan Municipal League Convention is very important. We can compare the other cities. So I encourage the, our colleagues to, uh, if they have time, go and learn some more. First, I get elected, I ignore it. Once I go there, and then I start, I say, no, I'm gonna go all the time. There is something I can learn. So requesting everybody, if any time we have, we should go there. Thank you.
Thank you. And what do the city managers report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I do have some updates on the actual EMS incident that everyone's concerned about tonight. So, um, that came to our attention, and immediately, I instructed the fire chief to look into it and report back to me on the outcome. If anything was done improperly, if we were within our policy, within our contract, what we can do better and where we're going for this. Um, it took the fire chief a little bit of time, but he reached out to our, our vendor, the EMS vendor, and they looked over the analytics of it. As you know, you know, we, we are limited in our resources here. We, we try to make the best of what we have. With that said, we, we know when the runs come in throughout the day. And one of the things we do is we have a secondary ambulance in place. Well, we had it in place between the hours of twelve PM and eight PM daily because we know that those are our peak hours, where we are most likely to have multiple runs at the same time. Now, keep in mind that there is still a lot of downtime in this service. I mean, there's a lot of time where you hurry up and wait for a call. So, you know, we try to estimate where to best place that additional service. Unfortunately, on, on this situation, the call actually came in at, I believe it was eleven oh nine, I have written here, I'm sorry, they were dispatched at eleven oh nine. Almost simultaneously, simultaneously, another call came out elsewhere in the city. And then a minute after that, another call came out to the high school. So we literally had three calls juggling at the same time when this happened. So, um, when it rains, it pours, you know? They could be sitting there for an hour, two hours, nothing comes by, and then all of a sudden, boom, you get three calls in a row. a sudden, boom, you get three calls in a row. You know, we do our best to anticipate this and, you know, we also have other contingencies in place. Immediately, we had the secondary ambulance actually dispatched. They were actually on their way to the city already. Unfortunately, the dispatch location is quite a ways out of the city, so they were on their way in at the time to come on duty at noon and they were en route to that call. During that time, the ambulance did clear from the original run, the original ambulance that was in the city and then proceeded over there, but by that time, it was already too late. The student had left the... Left the actual school and went home. Ultimately, we were dispatched over to the house later and I believe the child was transported, if I'm not mistaken, if I'm correct on that. Needless to say, we're doing our best to anticipate this. Some of the outcomes from this are, though, that the fire chief studied the analytics along with the EMS on this and determined that we are going to change the peak time from 12:00 PM to 10:00 AM. So we're gonna have the second ambulance now from 10:00 to 6:00 throughout that time, which is covering more of the school day generally. And we're committed to monthly look towards, you know, where this might shift as if needed to change. In addition to that, prior to this event even happening, we recognized that we want more coverage. The fire chief and the fire union were already working together to come up with a plan to turn over this service back to the fire department. As most of you already know, years ago, this was an internally dispatched thing, the fire department handled it. Somewhere along the line, it was farmed out and, I mean, for whatever reasons at the time that was thought that was best. We're already in progress of going back that direction. That is gonna be a long process. However, we hope that within the next few months, the fire chief estimated as short as three months, don't hold us to that, but maybe a little bit longer, we could have maybe at least the fire rigs responding out for some basic services in addition to if this happens again. We're a couple of years out from actually having our own ambulances again. As you know, it's hard to get supplies, it's hard to get parts, it's hard to get cars. Everything is in a shortage right now, but we're working towards trying to find a way to get our ambulance back in house. And even more so, I instructed the fire chief that I'd like to get the full medic, which we've never actually had. So that is our ultimate goal. That's several years out for that. We would actually have to send some of our people back to school for that, but that is where we hope to be eventually, in which case I believe the service would increase tenfold at that point. But it's a process. Bear with us, you know? We're doing the best we can with the resources we have. Alls I can say is we'll get better and we'll do the best we can with what we have for now.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh.
Does the 10:00 AM go into effect immediately?
Already. It's already happened. Yep. I should've said that. Yep, it's already in effect. That's all I have on that topic for now. If we have any pointed questions, I can circle back with you on that, ask the fire chief some specifics. He was unable to come tonight. He's way more attuned to this than I am because he's been researching it. But he is our resident expert on that. The fire department's... They're also handling EMS. So I trust his decisions on, you know, the changes here. I just trust his decisions on where we're heading and I think we're heading in a good direction generally. So some other topics. As you know, all your department heads are working really hard. Lots of activity buzzing in city hall any given day. Ms. Faulkner and Ms. Lookman are working very hard to get these lots sold. We're hoping to get those out as quickly as possible. You may have seen them go across Facebook and some other social media recently. Please spread the word. We are trying to get those sold and get houses built on them. The quicker we get them out, the quicker we're not responsible for it, like we have more people, houses to move into. As always, water department, there's still the programs to assist people with their water payments. Please head over to those. And lastly, a few updates from the PD. We have the trunk retreat, as the councilman mentioned. That's actually tomorrow, starting at 5 o'clock up here in Zussman's Park. Our city attorney actually committed to haul candy bars. So, yeah. So he just told me, I wanted to put that out there, and he said his wife went all out this time.
Council members get those too, correct?
No. Department heads get cheesecake, right?
So October 20, March 9th, which is this Saturday, the Hamtramck PD is having their forfeiture auction up front of city hall as well. Not only will there be cars there, but I believe there is game boxes and all myriad of various things that have been seized. Bring your... Bring some cash, bring a checkbook, bring a credit card and buy some cool stuff. So we have two prescription drug take backs coming up. We have a very small one also on Saturday. I believe that one... Help me out here, chief. Was that the one at the PIAST?
Yes, that's actually gonna be the larger event.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Next one. Go ahead.
Yes, that is at the PIAST Institute and that's like a kind of a drive up. They can just drive up, drop off. There's never any questions asked. We don't care where you got the medication, the pills, anything. We just wanna get rid of anything that's not being used, that's all.
Okay. Lastly, thank you for coming. Thank all the students for coming. We appreciate you guys coming. Visit us more often. Let's not make this, you know, something wrong thing, let's make it a regular thing. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
You have the other flyer for what's going on. The shorter of the drug take back is also tomorrow. That's gonna be at the senior plaza.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's the one you have in that. I don't have it in front of me, same.
Okay, so that's the 26th, 1 to 3.
Yes, that's tomorrow as well. So they're doing a smaller one at the senior plaza. Anyone can drop stuff there off there as well. Sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Chief, I have to put some input on this city manager report about the ambulance thing. So there was the reason we had outsourced the ambulance. It's always been two ambulance. Still was two ambulance that then. There is the managing issue. Well, it was the fire department, we had the ambulance our own. Most of the time, we had a record, ambulance cannot even start. They just wanna give the text. Some of them, staff was not there to drive and take it. So my personal life, I call my wife, I was at work. My wife called the ambulance, a camcira issue, the related woman. Ambulance did not get a start. Fire truck was my home, fire department. The blood pressure was my wife, over 185. They was telling there, everything normal, is my wife. So, and finally, we had to call Macomb County ambulance to come take over my wife. Then I came from my work, I tried to talk to the ambulance. They said, "Mr. Hassan, I don't have any time to talk to you. I have to take you to the nearest any hospital, otherwise she will die." But our department was telling everything normal. So there is the reason we outsourced. Ambulance did a very good job last couple of years. Suddenly, if we're not managing correctly or we're not looking to ambulance, why that one is still on the road or dropped the patient or really dropped the patient or not? So had to take the previous call, previous couple of call, takes whatever time happened while he was not on time. It was always been two ambulance. That's why I cannot believe that. I've been 11 years sitting here and I was with all the contracts. So managing issue, like a city manager, in terms of city manager, right? Right now, strongly looking at that issue and fire chief, this is the managing issue could be. Another thing, personal life happened. Four months ago, I called my ambulance. So 20 minutes gone, still not there. So the guy went to there and tried to draw the blood and make a... Like a big mark on it and blood is all over. So I complained to the city manager, so make sure that employee don't go to anybody else's house, make somebody scared. So those kinds of situation happening with the second source. First source, five years, we had no issue. So again, we really apologize and if our city fire department take over, there's another option. In case we cannot handle it, we can call outsourced right away, DMC or the MACOM. That's happened to my wife, came real quick. So we can... We can look at that kinds of option too. So again, sorry from our council and our staff and it's not gonna happen again, no matter what. Thank you.
Thank you. And for tomorrow's event, the trunk retreat, it's tomorrow, right? I will try to be there. I have an event at University of Michigan Ann Arbor. I would have to present there. I have to be there at 6:00. So I'll try to pass by before I go, if possible.
I guess we ain't gonna need some candy then. Well, I don't wanna take anything.
I was gonna bring my... All right, so we'll move to the public comment again.
Mr. Mayor, we have Sammy Samim again.
Okay, so I thought as you guys said that, like, you guys received three calls simultaneously unexpectedly, which I feel like tells us...
Yeah, I apologize. It has to only be on agenda items.
Okay, so...
So, yeah, it's only agenda items for the second public meeting for the public comment.
Yeah, follow rules.
Thank you, I appreciate it. That was all for public comment.
We have to come back to the next meeting. Of course, we can. All right. So we'll move to a fourth session. Yes, we do.
Can we take two minutes? Uh, we have...
Do we have a public comment?
No, 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 that's it.
Do we have to make a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion. Thank you.
What's the time, I'm sorry?
We won't be coming back to the poll anyway, so.
Okay.
Very close. We gotta go into close options.
Thank you so much.